I gotta get them turned on here. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Mrs. Carrier?
Here.
Mrs. Jones? Mrs. Mazzer?
Here.
Mr. Methlin?
Here.
Mrs. Better?
Mister here.
Mister Better, so sorry. All right, pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Man, it's great to see so many people here. It's awesome. So, I think we have a presentation on tap from the folks that went to the Ron Clark Academy.
This is part of them. I asked them if they would come and do a little presentation because the Ron Clark Academy, as everybody knows, is an investment for us and that training is stuff that we go to and I think it's important for you guys to see and hear from the people that are going, what they experience.
Awesome.
So, I'm Jenny Cunningham and I went with the group. I teach seventh grade here with Hicksville. So, there were 10 of us that attended the academy and we're with Mr. Countryman making 11, so we're just a small group here, not the whole entourage, as you can see. So, we went down to Ron Clark. You'll see a picture up there. Certainly for us, one of the greatest parts for us is that we felt like, especially with new attendees to Ron Clark, but a lot of us are also new to Hicksville, it gave us an opportunity to bond. So, this was actually on our flight out. That was not the real airplane, you were pretty safe, but that was just a cute little picture in Portland that they took. So, we headed down and got there. The Clark, the Ron Clark Academy that we attended was on a Thursday, Friday, so this is us in front of it. And even from that picture, it kind of sets a tone and an expectation for the excellence that they expect throughout their building. So, when we arrived, we were welcomed and, go ahead, Kirsten. We were pretty instant hits because Mr. Countryman has been there, he's a 10-plus-er, and so he had been there well over 10 times. And so, when we walked in, Ron Clark is there in the middle, and he instantly knew us and instantly was able to welcome us into the academy, which made us feel a little bit like mini rock stars. So, that was pretty awesome. Just to give you a picture and idea, this by far, when we were told it would be amazing, was underplayed in every way. So, here are just a glimmer of the pictures that you see on the top right and the bottom, or sorry, top left and bottom right are actually Ron Clark's classrooms. One is actually during a lesson, and so you can see it all darked out. He actually does almost everything by hand movements and by gestures, and so his actual instructional time is actually minimal as compared to actually just interactive and learning processes for his kids. And you see the same then down in the bottom right. The middle is a picture kind of from their dining area. The right-hand side with a, I don't know, it was two-story foot dragon or something ridiculous, is their gymnasium, which has flames on its ground floor, which is pretty amazing. The bottom left is Kim Bearden's classroom, she's one of the founders of Ron Clark, with Ron Clark. And then the middle is Cory Collins's room, who is an ELA instructor at the academy. One of the biggest things about these pictures is that the staff get to pick what their classrooms look like to a large degree. They spend a pretty exorbitant amount to design the classroom. And I think the thing that was awesome as a teacher to see in that moment was that it really exemplified the curriculum that they taught, it exemplified their personalities. And I think if you're gonna make kids feel at home and welcome, you might as well feel welcome at home. And I feel like every one of those teachers' rooms exemplified them in some way. And I think that that created a culture for them as those kids walked in that they felt like this was their home and those kids felt at home with them. So, we took obviously takeaways from it, but we also felt like it was really neat to feel like we were already ahead of a lot of schools in what we already do. So, two of the things that we felt Hicksville already does in an exemplary way was our house system. And so, the fact that we have these four houses set up that our kids are involved with, having watched that at the beginning of the year and watched our kids run down and be welcomed into their house by the high schoolers was amazing. And I use that in my classroom as an incentive constantly to try to play house against house, how you work in class with one another, trying to promote your house. Satia is going to win this year, and so I, so I worked pretty hard in getting my Satia kids active in class. So, that's an amazing incentive that really has intrinsic motivation for our kids. I mean, it has that value, but you're part of a community and a group and you want to work well for your class, so that's a pretty amazing opportunity. And then the Hicksville Essentials, 24 of them, Ron Clark has 55. We've taken 24 that we've initiated into Hicksville here. And just to be able to use those and to focus our energy on those with our kids, it was already something that we had. But we also felt like there were some things that we wanted to initiate into our classrooms as well. As we talk about some of our takeaways, these were from our counselors and our social workers. As we talk about the impact that the Ron Clark Academy had in our building, these were some of theirs. So, ensuring sensitivity for student experience and impacting within, and how those impact the classroom. Also creating boundaries, minimizing choices for students. And then words are only, are only powerful when they possess truth and good intentions. So, really focusing on the message and the meaning before your words. So, the takeaways that we felt for classroom teachers is, we all felt a little bit at a loss to know what we would take away from it, because you feel so overwhelmed when you're there and you come home and you feel overwhelmed again, to try to begin to say, okay, what do I do next? And not because there are amazing ideas, because there's so much, you kind of really figure out where do I go next? And so, we came up with three things that we felt amongst the 10 of us were really great things that Ron Clark initiates and that are really important. So, the first one is speaker recognition. So, @ronclark, one of the things that they are very specific at is when a student is addressing their classmates and giving answers, they are consistently on the spot. And so, students will be talking, you'll hear them say "feet, feet, feet" all the time to these little kids, meaning that their feet aren't in the right place, they're not able to show their hips and show that body form to their classmates, and they need to turn when you feel uncomfortable and you wanna shy away, "feet," and they make them turn instantly to go. So, one of the things that we've worked on in our classrooms is giving our kids that empowerment to face their classmates, to deliver answers and to be confident in what they're saying, setting them up for those successes so that they know they're ready to give those answers. Second thing that we've really initiated into our classrooms and implemented is music. You walk through that school and there's music everywhere. And it's really hard to not have a good time coming into a classroom setting when you have a good vibe music coming in and good vibe music coming out. And Ron Clark does an amazing job with that. You were just constantly inundated with this joyful music. A lot of it was kind of specific to that teacher and it kind of fit where they were at. And again, I think that idea of welcoming our kids into who we are, into our community, to our classroom was a big part of that. So, this is actually a clip from Mrs. Haggerty's classroom, getting their kids hyped up before they go to do a vocabulary activity. So, for me, in a middle school classroom, sometimes your kids can be a little bit sluggish when you come in first period, you know, a little bit of the junior high mopeys. And it's amazing just to watch them, even when you bring that hype and they come into your classroom and you set that tone, like, we're here, we're gonna, we're gonna bust out and we're gonna work really hard, has been really cool, really neat and cool in even the junior high classrooms. And then, the third thing that we have is eye contact and tracking. And so, this is the third thing that we took away from Ron Clark, is really being intentional about asking our kids to engage in eye contact. And tracking means as that action is moving, that they're actually tracking in the classroom. So, if someone else is speaking, your eyes are always on that person. You are constantly where that action is at. And that really gives that respect to the speaker and to the kids as they continue to So, our biggest thing that we felt when we met a few weeks ago is just an amazing sense of gratitude to you guys as a board and the vision that you guys have had, that you guys have spent this much, I mean, just frankly, how much money you guys have spent on giving us the opportunity to do that. I've been lucky to educate over a decade and that by far was one of the most amazing experiences I've ever had as an educator. And if you look through the Hicksville district, every single teacher that I've heard has said the same thing. So, your willingness to invest in us, to be able to move that back to your kids, I think we just wanted to say thank you for that opportunity. We also thought that if you're going to put that investment in us, we would welcome you. And I speak for all 10 of us that were out there in Atlanta, that we would welcome you guys to come into our classrooms and to watch and to see that live and in person. We feel like we opened ourselves up to that opportunity because you guys gave us the opportunity to go and to do this. So, if you guys wanna come up, we've got lots of grade levels represented and opportunities to do that. So, please feel free to stop in and to visit at any time that we could. The pictures you see up there on the left-hand side was one of the projects that they had from Ms. Niehaus. I'm gonna be honest, I don't know much about science, but I bet it was really cool. It was funny, like, it was very cool. I don't, I don't want to pretend like I knew what she was doing. I don't wanna speak out of turn. And then on the right-hand side, Mrs. Miles did a project with Aria, and that was her way of doing that through a football game. And then in the middle, you see a little dance here again from Mrs. Haggerty's classroom. That's it? It really did tie in with the last kid. So, again, thank you guys so much for the opportunity to allow us to go down there. It was an amazing opportunity for us to grow professionally, but being new to Hicksville and to feel like you had an opportunity to go with 10 other new people, just felt like a really awesome experience. So, thanks again for giving us that opportunity.
Good deal. Thank you for the feedback, and I look forward to hear about how you guys implement all that you learned. So, that's awesome.
One of the things that we've always said to the groups when we take them down there is, you know, there are too many things. And you see too many things that it just feels so overwhelming. But I always tell them to kind of focus on, you know, if everybody picked just one thing, then you're really implementing a lot more than just one thing. So, it's good to see that they are doing that, and I thank them for doing that. So, it's been a good thing for our district, I think. Thank you, guys. I don't, you're more than welcome to stay for our board meeting if you want, but I don't want you to feel bad if you wanna leave. You're more than welcome to just get out. Just kidding, I love ya. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks again.
Thanks for doing this, and I really appreciate it.
Give me four minutes for my softball speech.
They all helped put that together, and there were some of them that couldn't make it tonight, so, oh yeah. Sorry, Bill. Yeah, it's just great to have such a great group. I went with all those 10 women, like I said, like they said, and we had a great time and a lot of great conversation, not just while you're in the Ron Clark Academy, but afterwards, at night, in the van, coming home, so, or not coming home, but going back to the hotel. So, it was a good time. Thank you.
Deal. Okay, technology report.
I got two items for tonight. As Jeff spoke last time, we're looking to do a wireless update, and that project is moving along. We hope if everything goes well, that by the end of this school year, we should have that equipment and be moving forward with getting that in place and up to date.
That's those access points, right?
That is, yes, sir. That's the access point. And it should fix a network issue we've been running into that's been very, very frustrating for everybody involved.
Just better coverage, is that what you're going for?
Better coverage, and there's some issues with loading up, and they don't wanna release. And working with the company that we've been working with, we've tried all kinds of stuff. We've been working with them for months. And Mr. Methlin, I would just like to tell you, it's very, very, very frustrating to say.
They drop.
I bet.
Yeah. They'll be up and running and then all of a sudden.
And all of a sudden, nothing, completely nothing. And I get a phone call, hey, can you restart my base station? Restart the base station. Magic happens until the next time around. And it's, there's no real good rhyme or reason to it as to why it's doing it. But we'll have one base station that'll have 70-some kids on it, and the one right beside it, next room over, zero or three. It's supposed to load balance and it's just not doing it. And the equipment's of the age where things just aren't gonna work quite as well as they did when we first got them, so. So, that project is moving along, and I'm not gonna steal too much of Kirsten's thunder, but we worked on a little project for progress reports. And this last month, we worked with the K4 staff to develop a progress report for the different formal assessments we utilize at the grade levels. The idea came from Mrs. Kaufman and Mrs. Montgomery. I happened to sit in on a meeting, and when they got done, I said, how are you guys gonna do that? And she told me how they were gonna do that. And I said, you know something, we got all that stuff already. Why don't we pull it together?
We were just magic.
And so, we made this little project happen, and I think it was a pretty positive experience for everybody involved, so.
Easy to read, by the way. I'd appreciate that.
We were just trying to, for about the last year or so, trying to figure out a way that we could communicate the third grade guarantee requirements to parents, because they get up in the third grade and, you know, I didn't realize that my kid was struggling with reading, I didn't realize this, didn't realize that. So, we were just trying to figure out a platform that could be universal, and Mr. Hoffman was sitting in a meeting, and he's like, I can help make that happen. So, every grade level is tailored to that grade level. And so, next year, our plan is to be able to have it at parent-teacher conferences in October, and then again, when we do our benchmark in December, send it out in January, and then in the spring, be able to send it out in April. So, it'll just be constant communication with the parents, keeping them updated.
And I'd say this fills a gap that a grade card wouldn't fill. There's areas in here that, okay, you might see, okay, I got an A in math or a B in language arts or whatever, and this explains a little bit more what are those skill sets that was required to make that grade.
Would there be any way to put a synopsis of what the, like, 504 plans or anything like that onto those? Or is that something that, like, where, if they have one, how they're doing on that? I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there.
It's a good question.
Just wondering.
No, no, it's a good question.
Food for thought.
That's how this whole project started, with one question. A month later.
I would think based off of that data that you received from that progress report, you can see if they're making any strides with increasing their levels in their reading or their math. And then hopefully with a 504 plan, normally that provides all the accommodations. So, hopefully, all of it together, we'll, you'd see that increase in skill through, hopefully, even with that progress report.
I didn't, I thought it might take some questions off, like, take some off of you if you put something on there for that, you know, maybe you wouldn't get so many inquiries. It was very easy to read though, very visual format.
Yeah. He did a great job. We were gonna input that all of this manually and color-code the boxes ourselves. Yeah. So, I'm glad he was at that meeting.
Who else do you from being? It was actually kinda fun.
Yeah. Great job. So, that all for you?
That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, principal reports. Who would like to go first?
Go ahead and go.
All right.
Well, progress reports was my first, so next is kindness week. Mrs. Montgomery, if you have an elementary student, you've probably seen the February Fun Calendar that goes home. It's the shortest month, but the longest month. So, she always makes a February Fun Calendar. And last week, we celebrated kindness week. Preschool through fourth grade students participated in a lot of different activities. They were encouraged to complete a kindness challenge, completing different tasks to be kind to yourself, to others, to your family, to the Hicksville community. And once they completed all the tasks, then they earned a brag tag to add to their necklace. They also completed a challenge to raise some money for a Fairview student. And we just encouraged the students to bring in a dollar, and we raised over $1,000 for that family. Classrooms also participated in kindness competitions. The winning classes earned extra recesses from Mrs. Montgomery. And you may have noticed some extra memes on our social media last week that included our Hicksville students. Again, a huge thanks to Mrs. Montgomery and our classroom teachers for participating. I think our kiddos had a lot of fun last week. Some of our upcoming events, we do have kindergarten registration for our 2023-24 incoming kiddos. This will be on March 9th and 10th here at the school. Currently, we have 47 students registered or children registered. So, if you know anybody, any children that will be five by September 30th, I just encourage them to call the elementary office. And family literacy night is coming up. And in conjunction with our 21st Century program, our after-school program, Mrs. Brown, Mrs. Crawford, and our cafeteria, our librarians, librarians, and our title teachers will be hosting our family literacy night on March 16th from 4:00 to 6:00. We have an artist coming in, Steve Harpster. And so, we'll be having a dinner and some activities from 4:00 to 5:00 in the commons and then moving into the elementary gymnasium for a presentation by Steve Harpster. And lastly, this is kind of exciting, we have an artist in residence that will be coming to our school. We received a grant from the Ohio Arts Council for $6,000 to host an artist in residence. This program is designed to partner real artists with school art programs. Our guest is Claire Smith, a multimedia artist who specializes in murals. She's been working with Mr. Gagian and Mr. Stevenson to plan the project she'll be working on with our students. Still working on her schedule, but she will spend 20 days with her students during art classes, two days a week, beginning March 7. And she will be designing a mural that's actually going to be, the permanent location's gonna be outside the playground doors at the elementary. So, we're excited for this opportunity.
Cool.
On the, yeah, on the middle school side of things, our winter sports seasons have come to a close. We're really proud of all of our student athletes, participated in girls' basketball, boys' basketball, and then we had girls' and boys' wrestling. And it was just really neat to see them grow from the start of the year to the end of the year. They made great progress. And more importantly, we're just extremely proud of how they represented Hicksville. I got numerous compliments from other schools about our behavior when we went to opposing schools and how clean the locker rooms were after. So, our coaches and our student athletes did a, did a great job of representing our school, and we're just really proud of them for that and how they improved and grew athletically as well. And spring sports are right around the corner here. They're gonna be starting their practices here soon. A couple events coming up, our eighth grade students on Wednesday will be visiting Ford County Career Center. They will leave at around 8:10 in the morning and return approximately at 11:40 in late afternoon. They'll be able to tour the facility and visit a few programs that they might be interested in. And then when they return here, they'll eat lunch here and then go on with their regular scheduled classes for the rest of the day. Next Monday, February 27th, we are going to have a guest speaker, Captain Scott Frank. He's gonna do a digital empowerment assembly for us for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and then he'll also do an assembly for our high schoolers as well. But we're also really excited, he's gonna do an empower hour for our seventh and eighth grade student council, where he'll work more closely with them so they can have some dialogue and some conversations on internet and social media safety. So, it'll be really good for our middle schoolers. Internet usage and social media can be a hot-button issue, especially with our middle schoolers and them learning the correct way to use that. So, we're excited, we're excited for Captain Scott Frank to come in and do that assembly for us. And he will actually also be offering a parent presentation that evening. So, next Monday, February 27th, if any parents would like to come, it's gonna be in the high school gym from 6:00 to 8:00. And he'll just be sharing some, some tips and some safety measures to take for students and parents using the internet and social media.
Mr. Tier, are there, is there a notification going out about that person?
Yeah, that'll be going out this week about him coming in next Monday.
For parents?
Yep.
Actually sent an instant alert about that today, and then we posted it on the school Facebook page, so.
Okay.
And I resharing it a little bit, too.
I started saying, I thought I got it already.
Yeah. Yeah, so, I'll, I'll add to that. I've had the opportunity to hear Scott Frank speak before, and he's, he's pretty effective with students, and we were able to make this happen with some 21st Century grant money. So, looking forward to the opportunity. But on the high school side of things, scheduling for next year is underway. All classes have now met with Mrs. Wyman for their scheduling, and they're gonna be entering their class selections into Power School this week. So, students are starting to chat about that and planning on what they're taking next year. It's tournament time for winter sports here in the high school. In wrestling, the GMC meet was held on Saturday, February 11th, and a big congratulations to Brayden Dix, as he was named the GMC champion in the 113 weight class. And the team then is going to travel to Archbold for sectional wrestling this Saturday at 9:00 AM, so we wish them the best of luck. Our freshman boys' basketball team competed in the GMC tournament last week at Tenora. They lost in the second round to Wayne Trace. And then the varsity girls' basketball team ended their tournament play last Thursday at Bryan with a loss to Ayersville. However, our varsity boys' basketball team begins their tournament run tomorrow night at Waseon, as they take on Liberty Center at 7:30. We wish them good luck in their first tournament game. Then some upcoming events that we have on the high school side, all juniors are gonna be taking the ACT test next Tuesday, February 28th. That's here at the high school during the school day, part of the state mandate to administer that test. So, students will take that first thing Tuesday, and then they're dismissed after that test to go home for the rest of the day. The drama department will be putting on their annual spring musical. This one this year is entitled Into the Woods. It'll be held at the Huber Opera House on March 3rd and 4th, both at 7:30 PM. And then again on March 5th, that one's at 2:00 PM. Hope that the community will take advantage of one of those shows, go out and support our students. I've been very excited to hear about the students share their different parts of the musical, and having went and seen our junior high musical, it's just, I'm looking forward to it. I think we have a lot of talent here at Hicksville. Our students put a lot of time into these musicals, so I do hope that people take the opportunity and see one of those shows. Tickets are $12, and they will be sold at the door. And then a couple more events, the annual senior coronation will be held on Saturday, March 11th at 6 o'clock at the Huber. And then a dance for students will follow here at the school. And then senior trip, which is to Gatlinburg this year. Our students will leave on the evening of March 14th and return very early on March 18th. That's all I have.
I had a couple of questions or comments. First, great media presence this past week on all the kindness, like, they did an excellent job really highlighting that. And then on the ACT testing, have we done anything? I know we've talked several times over the last several years about like increasing, like, the readiness and preparedness for the ACT. Have we moved anywhere in that direction?
That I cannot speak on, I don't know, I'd have to.
Like as a specific class? No.
Or just in general?
But just, I think teachers address it in their classrooms, but.
In terms of like, yeah, some ACT prep or something specific towards ACT, not to my knowledge?
They do have some ACT tests, like, you can practice tests that you can take. Students are given those websites and where to go to find those tests if they want to, to give themselves that little practice. So, those are out there for the students if they wanna utilize them. And beyond that, I don't know what's given.
I think that's a missed opportunity on our part. I mean, there's so much tied to that now, especially with scholarships and kids going to college and that route, that a couple of points and how well they test on that and makes a big difference.
I think in circling back around, I think this will be the last year that they will be test-exempt. And yeah, because for the last two years, they didn't.
Right.
Yeah, I like the idea of ACT prep integrated somehow. I think that's a good.
Well, I know that a lot, I mean, lots of the teachers do as far as doing it online, the testing and stuff, they do a lot of tests online, which is similar to the format that they would have for ACT. Yes?
Yeah.
But other than that, I mean, they'd be taking away from their regular curriculum if, you know, if you was gonna do something specific for the ACT test. So, I'm not exactly sure how you'd want to approach that, Mr. Highlander.
Conversation worth having with Mrs. Wyman. Conversation worth having with Mrs. Wyman. She's really the ACT expert. So I'd be interested to see what she has to say about that. I, I will say, too, I mean, I know that a lot of the content of the ACT is covered quite well in our classes. At least, you know, our, our state test scores show that what's going on in our classrooms is good. So that gives me some hope that a lot of those things that wouldn't be included in an ACT prep course, I think, are being met in the classroom. But I, I do know what you're talking about. At my previous district, there was an actual ACT prep that was optional for students.
Was it? How long was it?
A semester.
Really?
As an elective course.
As an elective. I guess, you know, the drawback you do look at, it might take away from other courses or course offerings. But I'm going to speak with Miss Wyman and get her response on that.
Yeah, check maybe if that's an elective that we could offer.
Yeah.
I think we also need to look at the routes colleges are taking. I know that they keep changing their standards and what they're expecting. I know that the ACT, some of those, those scores or tests that they used to put at the top of their, might, the students need to meet, aren't really there anymore. And I don't know with the transition from COVID, if that's going to change back or not. But I know that the ACT isn't as, as dominant as what it used to be.
Yes.
So, good evening. First, I'd like to say we have such an amazing school with many wonderful staff members. However, I'd like to highlight our paraprofessionals and aides tonight. I felt it would be a good time to discuss how we utilize our paraprofessionals and aides throughout the school. The reason I want to highlight these particular staff members is that we are currently evaluating the need for a high school paraprofessional. When it comes to working with our special needs population, we are blessed to have one paraprofessional at the elementary level, which is kindergarten to fourth grade, and one paraprofessional at the middle school level, fifth to eighth grade. Our cross-categorical classroom has one paraprof, see if I can speak it today, paraprofessional who is hired through our district to support students in that program. In the elementary, we have a one-on-one aide who works in a kindergarten classroom with a student who has safety and health concerns. We also have one aide in the first grade classroom who supports a student that also has health and safety concerns. It is imperative to have these aides so that these students can fully access their educational day here at Hicksville. The ESC also provides our school with additional staff to support our students in programs. They provide us with two aides for our preschool program and one aide in our cross-categorical room. After looking at caseloads, needs in each grade level, and individual students, administration strategically places these staff members with grade levels or students that need the most support. Having paraprofessionals and aides allows our students with special needs to receive appropriate services and provides additional supports when needed that the intervention teacher could not provide without their assistance. As you can see, our paraprofessionals and aides are utilized to help protect and ensure that our students receive the best supports throughout their academic day here at Hicksville. And I also want to say that these extra staff members, the aides and the paraprofessionals, they don't just work with those students that need the extra support in the classroom because you don't want to be hovering on a student all the time, and you also want them to not use those people as crutches. They also help others in the classroom. So it's not just benefiting those students or a small amount of students. It's, it's benefiting a large amount of students because they work with more than just who they're assigned.
So like the, the aides that we have in the preschool room and the MD room, those are required because of that.
Of the amount of students per.
Right. You have to have a teacher and an aide regardless. You don't get a choice. So those are a must. Then obviously, the ones that are one-on-one for students are because of a need that that student has. So really, as far as the paraprofessionals, we have one at the K-four level and one at the four-five-eight level.
Right.
So there used to be one at the high school level here. I don't know if you remember, but there was one here and kind of got away from that. But we're evaluating, thinking there, there's going to, you know, could be very beneficial at that level as well.
And I'm going to say with our new seals and how students have to graduate and what they have to do to meet the requirements, they need additional support and help to, to meet those expectations. And to ask just the, the intervention specialist to take on and make sure they have, they're meeting all these, this criteria is a lot. And just to make sure that the students are getting homework done, getting their tests done, and the intervention specialists can concentrate on, on the skills in the IEP goals and all those things that they need to be concentrating on would be beneficial.
Is it happening in Hicksville, Angie, wait, is it in other districts where our special ed kids numbers keep rising and even in the lower grades?
Our lower grades are actually starting to look a little bit better. With all the supports we have, I think that we're starting to see that swing where the caseloads and, and, and those, and with our RTI system and all those things that we have in place, we're starting to see those caseloads shrink, decrease. But if you're looking, we also, I don't want to say we're going to, it's just going to keep decreasing because you see waves, and it just depends. But right now, our, our lower grade levels, it's not as much as what it's been. But our upper level, our ninth and tenth grade right now is our, our, our big caseloads at this point. And then we have a little bit of a reprieve, and then we go back to big caseload, and then we're going to, effort a little bit, and then now it's kind of going down again with our lower grades. So it's, it's not, I don't see the increase at this point. I think we're doing something right, but we definitely have for the next so many years some caseloads that need the support.
Our paraprofessionals and our aides, are those like our title teachers that it's like a year, like?
They're on a year-to-year basis. That's correct.
Kind of as needed and.
Right.
When funded and.
That is correct. For example, if it's a one-on, a aide for a one-on-one student, the student moves, then we wouldn't have them back. So, yeah. Any other questions for the principals?
Thank you. Eric, what's happening at Fort County?
So Caloogee Logistics, which puts up the spec buildings, it's actually Fort Winchester Holdings. On the north side of twenty-four, there's the decked building. They're going to double, approximately double in size. It's a twenty-five and a half million dollar expansion. So they're going to get a tax debatement there from Fort County, but it does thirty-six new jobs in the, the Bullland area. Talk to them about school choice. I need to actually catch myself up a little bit and educate myself on that a little bit. The school of choice, I guess there's been a lot of debate at the state level for what direction that's going to go. Fort County received a hundred thousand dollar safety grant. That's not actually official yet. I found out through a radio station called, wanted to interview, but nothing on the state website says we received it, but on some other paperwork, we have received it. So, but they're going to, if that all goes through, they're going to upgrade the fencing on the back of the property there at Fort County. And then the adult education classes had their state review, annual state review, and came back with great results. So all good news there.
Great. Thanks, Eric. Keith?
Yep. We are establishing a threat assessment. It's required, a threat assessment team. It's required by the state now. We have to have that in place by March. So we've developed a team, and several of them have already went through the one-day training that the ESC is providing as usual. State trainings that take all day long really could have been done in three hours, but that's neither here nor there, normal. But I do think that the having a threat assessment team is a good thing, and the objectives and stuff that it's going to cover, I think, will be beneficial for us. So I wanted to mention a little bit more about Erin Montgomery and, and us hiring her as a PR person. I was actually at a superintendent meeting the other day, and, and some of the other superintendents said, did you guys hire a PR person? And it's like, yeah, we did, you know? So just so everybody knows, as you guys know, it's very limited on the number of hours that we're spending and kind of on a trial basis between now and summer to see how much it is utilized. But I just want to give Erin a shout out because she's been doing a lot of really cool things, and, and obviously, it's being seen by not just our parents and our students and all of us, but also by people around. And, and some of them have said, you know, we might need to get one of those, too, because it's, it's great to get that information out there. Part of our objective for doing that, of course, was because the paper's closed. So we've been getting a lot of notifications out there, and a big shout out to Erin for doing that. She's also doing a great job of keeping the sign out here updated. I don't know if you've noticed, a few extra things going out there. So thank you, thank you, Erin. I think you're doing a great job. Special thanks to Kirsten, Erin, Tony, and Angie for all the work that they're, they've been doing this first year, or, you know, this, this year. And they're all pretty much new administrators except for Kirsten. And so, you know, we're, we're learning together in a lot of different ways, but I just wanted to give them a shout out because they step up to the plate. They've been very effective, and with Jeff leaving, you know, it kind of broke our team up a little bit, but we're heading down a new avenue, and, and I think that they're transitioning nicely into their new position. So thanks a lot, guys, for that. We had a great student assembly and a nice two-hour delay in service to celebration a couple of weeks ago. The students and staff have both been working very hard here, and the admin team wanted to make a short period of time, take a short period of time to acknowledge all the work that they've been doing. So we had a, a kind of a surprise assembly for the kids with the shirts that we have that were purchased through some alumni and PTO funds. So we're really appreciative for that. Also, per our last work session that we had had, the pep band platforms have been ordered, and we also have the roof on the concession stand scheduled. I think Mr. Haught said he thought that would happen in the next couple of weeks. As far as the blacktop areas, we're still waiting on some pricing on that. But two of the three things that we said move forward with are happening here or have already been ordered. I applied for a safety grant a while back. It's one that we always use to send our team for their training, yearly training that we had every year, and it was always like a given and is really going to get. It was apparently, it's been some changes because I submitted it for the same thing and was denied. So I was a little confused by that, but I did resubmit it again and to cover AEDs that Mr. Haught spoke to us about. Pretty sure that they'll be covered, but we'll have to wait and see. So I'll have to wait and see if it gets approved or not. And then also, the safety grant that Eric spoke about, I don't know, a month or so ago, and we were denied. They actually extended some more funding for that, and great news. We were approved, and so the grant is for two-hundred-and-four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars that we'll get to do some security upgrades in the building that go along with what Eric had written that grant for. So that's a, a great thing for the district. That's all I have.
I had to talk to Eric at our last meeting and talk to him because I, when I was down at Capitol Conference, I had checked with him beforehand, and so I actually went out and talked with two of the vendors and actually got to see firsthand like what they were doing in their presentation. It was pretty good stuff. I'm excited. It was really neat, and so money well spent.
Good, good to know. Thanks, Keith. Okay, I need a motion for minutes and financials. Thanks, Steph.
All second.
Thanks, Eric. Minutes from the organizational meeting and minutes from the regular board meeting on January eleventh, 2023. Treasurer's consent agenda items. Cash reconciliation as of January thirty-one, 2023. Financial statements for January 2023. Approve amended official certificate of estimated resources for fiscal year 2023 as presented. Total general fund resources of fifteen million, seven-hundred-eighty-five-thousand-eight-hundred-three dollars and sixty cents. And total resources of all funds of twenty million, eight-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-five-hundred-ninety-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. Approve amended fiscal year 2023 permanent appropriations as presented. Total general fund appropriations of twelve million, four-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and seventy-eight cents. And total appropriations for all funds of fifteen million, six-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. Approve resolution number twenty-twenty-three-dash-zero-five. Resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor as presented. Accept the following donations. Fifty dollars from King Craig Insurance Agency for archery. One hundred dollars from Guilford Investments for archery. Five hundred dollars from anonymous donor for Noah Carrickson Scholarship. Six hundred dollars from the Wholesale House for middle school incentive. Six hundred dollars from parent-teacher organization for house shirts. Fifteen hundred dollars from Ohio State Eagles Charity Fund for wrestling. Any questions or discussion? Got anything for us, Mike?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to add that the bond levy rate, that's in that resolution there, has decreased from four-point-eight-five to four-point-eight mils. Originally, you may recall, it was over seven mils at the beginning of that levy. So that's significantly decreased over the last number of years. However, I, I am a bit concerned where House Bill One may lead us regarding, one of the items on there is the elimination of the state's ten percent rollback payments. The rollback payments help subsidize local taxpayers' properties. In other words, kind of in a nutshell, if someone is paying a thousand dollars or, or their lab building's a thousand dollars, they would pay such as nine hundred, and the state would offset it and pay the other hundred dollars. That's kind of a rough thing about how that rollback works. So one proposal was to eliminate that. And it's a concern because with rollback and homestead, most of the money comes through rollback, some comes from what's called homestead. But last year, we received over three-hundred-seventy-three thousand dollars. If this gets approved, House Bill One, as it is, I would anticipate us losing upwards to seventy thousand dollars upon. So as of years, the bond rate has gone down, we would have a bit less towards that to generate the money that's needed to pay off the debt. That could start to go back up. So anyways, I'm, I'm one to be hopeful that that will not pass through legislation, not only to, whether it's a bond fund, but also affect a PI fund, general fund, and LIT fund. So I guess we'll have to see where that goes. I'd like to note that the lunchroom cash balance remains strong this time. I don't want to make absolutes, but it looks like it should be unlikely that lunchroom bill prices will go up next year. I do also have a code qualifier that is required by law sometimes that we have an equity factor that was kind of put on hold during the pandemic. But in other words, if our meals, we're not charging enough for our meals to essentially be as much or greater than the federal reimbursement, they want us, the Fed wants to increase our equity or increase the lunch prices. So I don't know where that may go. That is a calculation that needs to be done at the end of the school year, but as long as our cash balance remains strong, or the hope is not to have, to have mandatory increases.
How close are we to that? Because pre-COVID, we were lower than that because we've been increasing it slowly over several years because we were so much lower.
Well, we did a pretty big catch-up during COVID, actually, because they were paying for all of it.
Right.
But it didn't hit our, our parents.
Right.
Quite as family that way, so that helped.
Yeah.
But as far as where we are, I, I don't know. Again, have we? Again, the calculation and what goes into it, how they're going to roll that out and when they're going to do it, I mean, some of this is out of control of our own hands. We have to follow what we have to follow. But anyways, it's good to know that the lunchroom balance is strong. I think Ms. Scrubber has done some good things as far as tightening things, but we're also fighting inflation. As everybody knows, the prices, meal costs going up quite a bit, but I think the district's working hard to keep that fund strong.
I think it's definitely better than it was five or six years ago.
Well, it's better than it was just a couple of years. Actually, the free meals that were offered through the pandemic coming to leave absolutely were the godsend as far as creating a balanced. We had been, since I came, the year before I came, we were significantly, significantly red in the lunchroom balance and since then, we've made progress. The first couple of years that COVID hit, the federal ability for all students to be considered free, not only for us, but throughout the whole state, lunchroom balance has just really gone up. And so hopefully, we're able to maintain that, keep it strong and keep it up to the real prices anymore than we need to. Well, Keith already mentioned the round four of the school safety grant program, the $204,000 plus dollars, so we'll have to move on that. Also wanted to just note, in fiscal year '22, the district received two, over $3,148 in federal funding. Historically, we've been more around three quarters of a million. Obviously, a large part of this, over a million dollars was, had to do with COVID, COVID funding. A lot of that money that we did receive, we're trying to take care of more or less one-time expenses. We were able to allocate basically K-12, one-on-one computers. We renewed the computers we had. We're on a five-year, basically a five-year contract. Five years had come up. We would now have new machines beginning this year, basically throughout the whole district. So we get five years out of that, that was great use of the money. But that's a significant amount of money to help us do some things that we would not have really otherwise been able to do at all if we would have dug into the permanent program for the general fund. I also, Eric will have to talk some more and discuss the House Bill, talking about charter schools, the impact that may have on public schools. That's huge concern. If they can really, the increase that they're looking to provide to vouchers, it's significantly more money than we get for our students, actually from the state. And there's a lot fewer controls, accountability when you get into charter schools. They don't have all the regulations that we have to follow. They also do not have to take or accept kids that have one to, in other words, and it's really my belief that this thing, school choice, it really is that, it is the school choice. There are people that try to sell it that it is the parents' choice. To some extent, it's true, but if the school doesn't want these certain students because of whatever reason, and typically it is because it will cost more than a normal student, they won't accept them. Obviously, we do. That's part of what we do as a public school, but I think some of that is not being maybe considered with some of the laws moving. I'm telling you what's, we're probably going to keep an eye on where that goes. Anybody got any more questions?
All right. Thanks always for all the detail. You do a phenomenal job. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mager?
Yes.
Mr. Vetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Mathen?
Yes. Motion carries four to zero with one absent. Take another motion for employment and certified staff. Thanks, Jen.
All second.
Thanks, Eric. Recommend to approve the following as certified substitutes for the 2022-2023 school year. Tony Egley, Kelsey Monroe, Angela Johnson, Nicholas Pepple. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2022-2023 school year. Day Blue, girls mini-aces track.
Coach Josh Bries.
Head Junior High, boys track coach. Ryan Meiser, assistant basketball coach, 40%. Paul Payne, boys mini-aces track coach. Kelly Van Horn, head Junior High, girls track coach. Recommend to approve the following as a volunteer for the 2022-2023 school year. Jennifer Cunningham, softball. Recommend to accept the resignation from Linda Lindquist as classroom instructor at the conclusion of the 2022-2023 school year. Recommend to approve.
Oh, supplemental contract?
For the 2022-2023-2024 school year. Paul Payne, head cross-country coach. Any questions or commentary on any of that?
Just that on Linda Lindquist, it's been great having her here in our district. We're thankful for her and she's going to be a grandma and so she wants to spend time with that grandbaby and she's in a position where she can do that. So that's why she's leaving. We wish her the best.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Mager?
Yes.
Mr. Mathen?
Yes. Motion carries four to zero with one absent. Need another motion, please.
All move?
All second.
Thanks, Eric. Thanks, Jen. Recommend to approve Noel Nuttall as a certified substitute for the 2022-2023 school year. Roll call?
Mr. Vetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mager?
Abstained.
Mr. Mathen?
Motion carries three to one abstention and one absence. Another motion, please.
All move.
Thanks, Steph.
All second.
Thanks, Jen. Recommend to approve Bridget Hobblett as cafeteria worker from five hours per day to 5.5 hours per day, retroactive to August 29, 2022. Recommend to approve Divine Weber as a classified substitute for the 2022-2023 school year. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2022-2023 school year. James Egley, assistant track coach. Garrett Franz, assistant basketball coach, 25%. Baseball coach, pardon, 25%. Phil Handy, assistant baseball coach, 35%. Becca Harvey, assistant softball coach. Pam Payne, assistant track coach. Recommend to approve the following as volunteers for the 2022-2023 school year. Ashley Doctor, track. Madison Sebenhour, track. Shelby Soles, wrestling. Recommend to accept the retirement resignation from Sandy Wright as cafeteria worker effective August 31, 2023. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2023-2024 school year. Justin Davis, head football coach. Samantha Lavin, head volleyball coach. Any comments or questions on any of those?
Well, if Sandy Wright's not missed around here, then something's wrong because she's an amazing person and she's given us a lot of years, so I wish her the best in her retirement. Great person, as you know.
I think she's all right.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Mager?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vetter?
Yes.
Mr. Mathen?
Yes. Motion carries four to zero with one absent. Motion for services and agreements.
All move?
Thanks, Eric. Thanks, Steph. Recommend to approve an audit agreement between Hicksville Exempted Village Schools and the Auditor of State for fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. The cost of service is $19,844. Any commentary, Mike?
Well, part of that cost is the fact that we did receive a lot better ones. So there is, there's that part of it, of that cost, $2,000 cost, has to do with them doing a federal audit. As far as what we've been seeing here so far, they've been going out, several weeks in and out. I've heard no, no issues or concerns, so we could say that.
Good. Good. All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Vetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Mager?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Mathen?
Yes. Motion carries four to zero with one absent. Need a motion for other business, please.
I'll move.
Thanks, Jen.
I'll second.
Thanks, Steph. Recommend to appoint Eric Vetter as four-county Board of Education representative effective January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2025.
This has been put on there, we approved this back in, I think, December.
I thought that was the case.
Except for, we just had a three-year appointment in front of January of 2023 and the four-county board would, if you like us to, or four-county would like us to have an end date listed and approved. So that is why I would do it basically a second time.
Thanks for the clarification because I thought I was going crazy. All right. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mager?
Yes.
Mr. Vetter?
Yes.
And Mr. Mathen? Yes. Motion carries four to zero with one absent. And a motion, please.
All move?
Thanks, Eric.
Thanks, Steph. Recommend to approve resolution number 2023-04. Resolution to adopt Ohio Schools Council Governance Policy Change. Recommend to approve a resolution authorizing 2023-2024 membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association.
Roll call? Mr. Vetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Mager?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
And Mr. Mathen? Yes. Motion carries four to zero with one absent.
Do we have any other business?
Still no flooding.
Still no flooding. That's the one that...
Nice to hear.
Anything we need to discuss?
Well, speaking of no flooding.
First of all.
Well, no, I don't think so. I just came in. Eric sent an email to the Department of Commerce about 20 minutes ago and said, "In case of water curmats and water issue, we derive today about 18. Maybe Van Cress can help contact the state after two issues in a row with the state outlet." So I'm not sure what that is regarding the outlet, keep it real. Eric said he's tried numerous times, the state actually has a problem with ours. Maybe he, yeah, maybe hopeful that Van Cress can get something done. So I don't sure.
I'm not sure what that is.
But I don't think we've had any water over the road in quite a long time.
No. I look. I go through there.
I drive most mornings.
I'll take all good for now. Anything else the board or anyone else would like to discuss? Jeff, are you an unannounced guest? Okay, all right. I didn't want, I didn't want to leave you out. All right. So we'll need a motion to go into executive session.
All second.
Thanks, Jen. Thanks, Eric. No decisions will be made.
We probably should have to leave tomorrow morning.
Item number one. Appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, or demotion, compensation of a public employee or official. Say we'll go in at 20 till 6:40. And with that, it concludes the public portion of the meeting. Oh, next meeting? Yeah, thanks for that, Steph.
Also, if you make a comment, whether to go back to, you know, for the decision of adjournment, what's going to be called?
No, we'll go straight back to adjournment out of executive session, so. And the next meeting will be?
March 20.
20? The 20th?
20th.
Yeah, we can't, we won't be here.
Yeah.
Has to be the first day.
13th would be the Monday before that, right?
Later? Would you like to follow him?
Could be the last. 27th.
Well, if you want to go that route, I'm fine with that.
I'm not going any worse.
Yeah, so it's 13th through the 27th. Either one works fine for me, whatever you guys think.
Impossible.
27th?
Okay.
Steph, 27th? All right. So after executive session, we'll adjourn until the next meeting held on 3rd of March. Sorry. 27th of March. At 5:30 in this room. All right.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Mager?
Yes.
Mr. Mathen?
Yes.
[music]